We will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, any amendments, David?
No, no amendments.
All right, Arnell, announcements?
Yeah, so yesterday were obviously the midterms and I thought it was really interesting, a lot of students from different organizations like PWA or Young Democrats and Republicans were helping out, so it was really awesome to see young students who can't vote yet still participating and being active, that was awesome. And then also, just for myself, kind of a quick shout out to all the final fall sports. It's my final year here, so watching all my friends finish up their sports and soccer season, field hockey, it's kind of bittersweet in a way, because like, that's the last time they'll play there, so just wanted to shout them out, they had, they all had a great fall season and it was fun watching them for the final time. And then also, one other thing that I've been working on that I wanted to point out, so our high school had a climate committee which talks about kind of the environment of the school and how people feel, and so they kind of took a break from that committee, and it's kind of composed of a bunch of teachers. And so, I think this year, or maybe halfway through last year, they brought that committee back up, and one of the teachers asked me to kind of be a part of that, so every Tuesday morning we've been meeting, and we've been discussing ways that we could improve our school's environment, or really just reflecting on how students are feeling with so much that's been going on. And so, our goal is, I think in December, we want to kind of have a reflection, or reflect and ask students about how they're feeling, and ask a bunch of different questions in different ways, depending on grade levels, so like with freshmen, we could be asking questions within slams, with sophomores, we were thinking in advisories and stuff, but the whole point of the committee so far has been to kind of reach out to students and kind of reflect on how the new security has been affecting us, and just getting feedback, and I think that's been really important, and I'm glad that committee's back up, and that's it.
Thank you, Arnell, and that echoes, I've heard some of the same around, again, great, great to have the climate committee looking at that, but you know, safety and security, and where we are with how that's going at the high school, I think that's an important piece to pay attention to, so we really appreciate that. A couple other things, again, we heard some of this last night from Kevin, I just wanted to recap some of those, some of those I was hearing for the first time as well. Market Street, just for folks to know, will reopen November 20th, possibly as early as the 16th, you heard that, so again, that's important information for folks who might be using the Market Street as we've become so accustomed to. We also heard about the delay in the noise exposure mapping, or the NEMs, and they were initially targeted for December, and we've heard now that they're delayed until January, possibly February, and I've learned a little bit more, it's really because the FAA and gathering all of the information that they need, they don't, do not have, they do feel like it's still appropriate and will move forward, but I don't have a lot more information than that now. And then, on November 13th and 14th, we have 15 people that are part of looking at other schools, looking at schools in Massachusetts, so there'll be 15 folks, I think Bridget is joining us, and a combination of teachers, administrators, community members joining us, so we'll be traveling to four schools, I may not have this exactly right, but four schools on Monday, so it's a long, early and long day, and then three schools on Tuesday before we return home, and it will be an overnight stay there. So that's the 13th and 14th next week. Also, on the 13th, during the day, there's the Governor's Safety Council, it's not called Summit, but it's, it's Governor's Council for Safety. And so, I was initially going to be there, but Gary, Gary was going to be there as well, Gary, Kevin Grellis, our SRO, our head custodial supervisor Lawrence Francis will be there, and who am I missing, and Krista Chambers will be there to talk about the role that school resource officers play in schools. Many other schools are talking and looking at school resource officers, so those are the additional announcements.
And one quick one, we've had an opportunity to interview a couple of excellent candidates to sit with you, Arnell, and hope to make that announcement, so your junior colleague will be seated with you at our next meeting.
Awesome, great.
Any other announcements?
Yes, Elizabeth, thank you. Oh, is anybody else speaking to the public? Okay, last week, I attended a Howard Center program called E-Cigarettes, Vaping, and Jewel, and it was put on by the Department of Health Commissioner, Dr. Mark Levine. It was, it was comforting to me that so many people in the room shared my frustration that, about the inaction on the issue. The exasperation of the trend, or the epidemic of vaping in schools was well-known by everybody there, and they were very frustrated that the action on this issue is not nearly as quick as they, as they, we all felt it should be. There were a lot of really good exhibits showing it, and I will be bringing them to a next, a subsequent board meeting soon, perhaps I have some convincing of this board that this is something that we need to say something about. So I'm going by the, by the old, that saying, if you see something, say something. You know, I've seen lots of kids getting hooked on nicotine, and now it's more vaping than tobacco, like it used to be, and I've also seen reports showing that kids who graduate high school with a nicotine addiction do much worse in their careers as kids who don't graduate with a nicotine addiction. That's why I think that this is our business, to do something about it, say something about it, I mean, we're not legislators, but we can say something about it, we can take a stand on it. So I will have some efforts to be more persuasive in a future board meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, City-School Collaboration.
So actually, last night, we had a, last night, we had our, our scheduled meeting with the city, that's, I would say, our most recent collaboration, of which, some of which I reported out on some of the items before us, and we're going to talk in just a moment about some of the other collaboration related to the warning and the, the results of the ballot.
And do we have a meeting on the calendar?
For our meeting?
Yeah.
We do not, we do have, I think there's reoccurring, I need to connect with you, Elizabeth, on what's, with those dates.
Great, we'll just make sure we, this is the meeting between Kevin Dorn, David, myself, and Helen Reilly. All right, move on to the superintendent's report.
So the first item is the budget book redesign, I don't have anything for you to look at?
Well, or, no, we're on seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven.
Wow, that was great.
You jumped way ahead.
I was really trying to get ahead. Well, it could be in my report, I suppose we can move it, but, so the ballot, sorry for that, the ballot election results. Delaina has been kind enough to print off what Donna had sent us late last night by your place, which provides you information on all of the, the articles, and their ratio of yes versus no, and again, if you haven't had a chance to see them, pretty unanimously, they all passed, all of the articles on the city side, Articles 1, 2, and 3, and Articles 1 and 2 for this, for the school district, the three easements related to Rick Marcot Central School on the, on the transference of land, and then the lease on 575 also passed. So you also see the number of eligible voters and those that cast ballots. So that's, that's that one.
Want to congratulate Martin on his reelection?
Yeah, sorry.
Tight race.
David, before you go, it sort of crosses between six and seven, but there was a bit of discussion Monday night after our meeting, it didn't really happen in the meeting, but there was a bit of discussion with some of the library folks afterwards, where they imply that they sort of thought, oh, you know, if this goes through, it's done and dusted, and we're ready to just get going, and that the design was final. And that was a concern to me, because my understanding from the agreement that we signed with the city is that we don't have veto power over their design, but we, especially with regard to safety and security, have input, and so I think we need to very quickly get on the schedule with them and get started on the meetings that are promised in those agreements, to make sure that we're okay with the design, because I think there's still a few things that I saw on Monday night that were concerning, parking was one of them, and where it's located, and two was still this terrace that still sort of faces the school, is a concern for a lot of people, and so I think we really need to flesh out the details of that design before it gets too far down the path.
Yeah, and I spoke with, I was not paying enough attention to what I was supposed to pay attention to this afternoon, was talking to Kevin Dorn, and I was asking him about the status of the design, and it's pretty clear that it's still doing a lot of work on that. So the library, maybe inside the library, they think it's, it's done, but, but it's very much a work in progress, from what I heard from Kevin.
Equally importantly, we have some traffic flow.
Right.
And design elements to the school property, too.
And so there's opportunities in there, as we have worked on to outline our responses and our participation in the traffic on our property and the parking, so.
But having said that, I think we should probably, if you haven't already, set up a meeting, like, as soon as possible to make sure that they're not getting ahead of the game too far, without our input.
Got it.
Yeah, and all of that notwithstanding, well, as we have been stewards for the district's assets, it's an exciting opportunity for our city neighbor near the Rick Marcot School property, so this certainly was a community endorsement of, of the project and the need, so. All right.
Thank you. Second is, I'm trying to skip a little farther down on the agenda, sorry.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, the other part is enrollment, the other area, and also, in your packet was information specific to our enrollment, and again, we have to kind of walk this down in time, so it can change, but you have both the middle school and the high school data, and then on the little bit more busy, busy schedule, have the three elementary schools and the district summary on currently where we are. Those of you who were at the visioning session today had the opportunity to see the projection enrollments, and, I mean, I think there was a couple questions from folks around where are we at in regards to the 18-19, and just, we're one off at the middle school, and we're, the two numbers we reported in the projections were 938 this year, and we're at 911 at, at the, at the high school, although all of the projected enrollment on tuition has actually held, and so it's our resident population that's had some fluctuations there. So, again, I think this, I wanted to provide this to you, just because I think it's an important thing to have in front of you, as we continue to move forward with our year and budgeting, et cetera. Also connected to that is our master planning and visioning work, and how, how we're faring with the population projections. So I don't know if you have any particular question related to, I didn't give you a lot of information, so, I mean, this sheet, the elementary one can get a lot busier with looking at what I planned, where we had, so I really just gave you the last year where we ended, those of you can, you can certainly look at just the cohort travel from last year to this year, so again, if you're up at the top of the page, Rick Marcot, you can see that the 62 first graders have moved to 60, the 45 Ks to 48, and so on and so forth, so, I know, Alex, you have a question?
Yeah, in the Chamberlain, last year, the second grade had 49 kids, and according to this, has had three teachers. This year, those kids are now third graders, and there's actually 54 of them, and they, according to this report, it's two teachers. Is that correct?
That, right now, I believe that is correct.
Well, they only had two last year.
Well, the third, no, the third, this cohort had three teachers last year, it's a large cohort for Chamberlain.
Thirty, yeah, three.
They had three teachers last year, now there are, there are six more of them this year.
That's right.
And there's only two teachers.
No, that's not right, it should be 15 there.
Where?
It should be 15 teachers this year.
Okay.
A total.
Yeah, that box is wrong.
Okay, so that makes me feel much better, that, especially that I haven't heard something about it, because that would have been a problem.
Yeah, sorry, I'll correct that. Thank you, Alex.
Parents here, once I saw that number.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm not.
So there's three teachers there, okay.
So anyway, just to note on enrollments, if anyone wanted to look at what was printed in the, in the master planning session, I have those if you wanted to look at them.
Question, David, with our agreement with Grand Isle, our, and this year at Tuttle, we have nine tuition kids in seventh grade, are we going to have a similar amount in seventh grade, and then these nine cohorts move to eighth grade, which would pretty much double?
Right, so, we think that number probably could change next year for seventh grade, because again, they, they will not have, they will not be offering seventh and eighth grade experience next year.
Yep.
So, the islands could send us, I mean, it's, it's open to them.
Yeah, quite a floor.
This, this was helping with the transition, it was an agreement that we have between the islands.
Yep.
Just to minimize the transitions for the, for those seventh grade students.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, there are seven.
Seven, not nine?
Seven, not nine.
There may be.
Well, I think nine's correct.
Nine from the high.
That's right, only seven from Grand, that's right.
From Grand Isle, okay.
I believe that nine, that nine is right, yeah. We don't, we don't, we don't differentiate sometimes between where, yeah. Okay.
And for Stephen, for Alex, the, the projected growth rate for enrollment largely at the middle and high school, kind of over a 10-year period, was in that 2% range.
Yeah.
But certainly, you know, relatively positive in terms of, in the, the work that's going on, and I think, what's the update period for this, David?
Yeah, so Jerry McGibben, or whatever the demographic actual title name is, they're due to us, I believe, December, mid-December timeframe, with the update. And again, the update is, takes into consideration a lot of activity within the city, it's, and, and in addition to the population projections.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, Master Planning and Visioning.
So let me ask Roberto to come on up and have a seat here, we've seen, some of us have seen you quite a bit today, and we're happy to see you again, but Rob Fitzgerald, no relationship to Elizabeth.
That we know of.
That we know of, right, is with Dor Whittier, and today, folks should know that we spent all of today, really from 8:45 until 4 o'clock, working as a visioning committee with some close to 80 people in attendance, talking about our middle and our high school, and thinking about ways in which we can continue to be a, a school, and looking at specifically our spaces, and so, we've asked Rob to give us a little bit of an update, obviously, for those of us that were there, it will be a little redundant, but for those that were not, and people that are watching, will be helpful, so welcome.
Can you back up a second, so, just to kind of give a little update to people where we're at, since I last saw you at your last board meeting about a month ago. Since then, we had a principal's workshop, where we had, it was an all-day session, we met with the high school principal, and a few of his staff, and a couple of students, high school students, during the morning, really to listen, to hear from them, you know, what's working and what's not working so well in each of the schools. In the afternoon, we met with the middle school principal and a couple, a few of his staff, and did the same thing, and then we took a tour around both schools, and, you know, looked at the spaces that they, we were just talking about. And so that was really helpful for us, to get an insight from their perspective, as to, you know, what is, you know, like I said, what's really working well, and what could be some possible areas of improvement, in terms of the spaces educationally. So, we, we took that information, and we also did some our own, some of our own space analysis, based on information that we gathered on the existing building, and, as well as the feedback that we've been getting, and put together a full kind of visioning presentation. And this presentation that we did today, really kind of focused on giving a little bit of a background on, you know, what schools have been doing around the country, not just in, you know, Vermont, but in schools all across the nation, examples of, you know, spaces that promote different types of learning, and flexibility, and thinking about the future, and so on. But we also used this visioning session to hear from the community members, so we had approximately 70, 75 people there, and, you know, we wanted to hear from the widest range of, you know, people that are in the community, from teachers to parents to students, I think we had eight or nine students there, from middle, middle school and high school, parents, community members, some faculty, city officials.
Business owners.
It was a business community, so we really tried to get the whole spectrum, and we went throughout the day through a series of kind of mini, let's say, group, you know, small group discussions, large group discussions, hands-on activities, where, you know, for example, one of the exercises was, you know, think of a student in the school, and put some character, some characteristics on a, on a chart, and describe, you know, the day and the life of that student, what's it like? And so you had, we had, you know, seven or eight groups of about seven or eight people in each group, and they'd be all working on it, and posted it up on the wall, and then report out, and then later on in the session, the next exercise was, you know, what does their schedule look like, envision them of, so that person, that student was in kindergarten, and then they said, so 15 years later, or 18 years later, you know, what's their schedule look like, whether they're in middle school, or they're in high school, and different groups were assigned a middle school or a high school, so some groups looked at, you know, that student as being a middle school student, and what would their schedule look like 15 years from now? What would that student look like 18 years from now? And so, each group reported out that as well, and then later on, the third exercise was, okay, now, what types of spaces support those, that schedule, and those activities, and that type of person that you've described? And so, really the idea was, you know, describe to us, you know, what the person is like, what their needs are, what their backgrounds are, how do we, you know, address all of those things, and how do we shape the environment around them to support that? And so, so that's kind of where we, we went with this, each person was given a journal to write down their thoughts, in addition to the flip charts that we had, so we came away with really a ton of information, that now we will sift through and, and pull out all of the information from all the flip charts and all the journals, and we'll condense them into a document that we will then report back out to you guys, and you'll have a chance to read through it and take a look at it, and it'll also help us, help to inform us to determine how we're going to approach developing options for each of the schools. And we touched on that briefly, and I think we've talked about that here as well, but really, our intent is to present the full gamut of options, you know, from, you know, an intervention of the highest need at each school, you know, whether it's, you know, focusing on improvements to the cafeteria, or the entryway, or things like that, to, you know, full-blown renovation, potential addition, you know, and compare that to new school. And so, we really want to present the full range of, of options, and bring that up for discussion, and, and see where you want to go from there. So our next step from here, I think, like you said, David, earlier, next week, there are two full days of visiting other schools in New England, examples of, of recent projects where people can see, you know, for themselves, walking through the spaces, what some of these schools are doing, some are very innovative and, and progressive, and other ones are more traditional. And, and then towards the end of the month, going to the Shelburne Community School, so middle school renovations that were done there, and, and then our next step is to have a round two of the principal's workshop, that'll be coming up in December, and then from there, we'll, we'll start to begin putting together some conceptual options towards the end of December.
And that's, and that timeline, Rob, is somewhere around where we would get more information would be likely in that February timeframe, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know if any, in addition, you know, from, Bridget was part of, sat in on the principal workshops as kind of a board member, kind of in behind, I don't know if you had anything to reflect on, or any other board members that were at today's session, but again, I, I would say that I think the conversations were rich today, it was nice to hear perspectives from folks that we don't often hear from, that were there. I think the exercises allowed, allowed for enough individual time, and small group time, and some sharing with, with the activities, I think they were appropriately allowed us to do that. I think we're well positioned, as you said, we're headed off, so some of the things that people were talking about, we'll see, we do have two vans that are going, so we're going to have, have a lot of together time, I would say, to, to talk about the options and what we're seeing, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty, you know, compact schedule over those two days to do that, and Dor Whittier actually will be riding with us, so they'll get a lot of us, too, or we'll get a lot of them. I don't know if there was other things that, that Martin, Elizabeth, or Bridget had to...
Yeah, just a couple things. I thought it was a very interesting session as well, and, and perhaps through the last, through your going through all the information, you'll get at this point, which, which I continue to really focus on, and that is, what is the educational benefit of these different things? And, yeah, the interesting cafeterias are, you know, designs I thought were really cool in some of the, some of the schools, but I'd like to understand the connection, there probably is. I, I found one of the more interesting pieces of information that I received was, and it was just for a moment, that we, we, or you folks talked about this, a study that suggested that these infrastructure can improve educational outcomes, I think it was either 16%, 20%?
16.
Something that we didn't see when we, the last time we were looking at master planning and visioning, and I just want to, I guess, again, emphasize that, that I want to be able to see, you know, the, the benefits educationally for any of these suggested infrastructure changes, and I hope, I wish I could be at the trip next week, but I wish to be hunting deer in Michigan more, so, so I, but I'm hoping that at that as well, that we constantly understand, you know, have you achieved educational benefits from, from the different infrastructure changes that you've done, so, but I thought it was, I thought it was very interesting, it was a, it was a good session today, but I just want to keep my eye on that part.
Yeah, I don't really have a whole lot to add, because I've talked a lot about master planning and visioning already, it was just an excellent, it was, it was very well-run, and very engaging for the community, I think, and I thought you guys struck a very good balance of, of outlining what exactly we were there to do, so that the community understood what you wanted from them, and what their expectations could be following the session, so I thought there was just a very positive energy around it, and it was kind of fun to sit and, and dream big, and you know, later on, we'll, we'll get to the part of having to cut back expectations best, based on budgets and priorities and all of that, but it was fun to sit there and, and really think about what could potentially be, and, and to see lots of pictures, we didn't really talk about that, there were some videos and... There were some videos and pictures and, and things of other schools and things that other schools have done. And that was kind of exciting to see. So a little bit of a preview of what we'll get to see next week. So, yeah, I mean, one of the things that was interesting, I was sitting with, with the high school principal at our table. And it's, it's a little bit to your point, Martin, that the educational benefit, sometimes it's direct educational benefit. What additional class can we offer if we change the space in such a way? But one of the things that, you know, Arnel's already brought up tonight is school climate and, and how people are getting along and how they're working together in the space that we have. And, and Mr. Burke was just sort of talking about how often when you, you give kids, you know, more choice and a little bit more control over their own situation and a little more flexibility, you actually see behavior improve as opposed to, a lot of people would think, you know, less structure kind of lets things get more out of hand. But often, when kids feel they have a little bit more control and a little bit more responsibility, they kind of rise to that occasion. So that was an interesting discussion, which kind of talked to the common spaces and how we bring kids together and faculty members together. And the idea that, you know, some of these open spaces that are in a lot of these plans allows sort of passive observation, as Mr. Burke was calling it, a little bit more supervision without being heavy-handed about the supervision, just a better view and being able to see everything and all the interactions that are kind of going on and keep tabs on those in a way. So, yeah. So there were just a lot of interesting little tidbits. I could go on and on and on, but I'll turn it over to Elizabeth if she has anything to add from her table.
Just to respond to that, when I say educational benefits, I'm looking at our ends as well, which is not just academic proficiency. It is all those other things. So just to make very clear, I'm not just about...
Boxer that one in, yeah.
Yeah, class.
Oh, and I didn't mean to imply that that's what you were...
Yeah, yeah.
I was just saying, it was just interesting because he really sort of drew that connection between, the clear connection between sort of a better school climate and, and people being better able to access their education and really sort of attain the ends and that kind of thing.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think, I would agree. I thought it was really well-run. I really appreciated kind of starting with a student who's just entering the system and sort of personalizing that. So you had, you had a concrete base off of which you were building some goals or aspirations and sort of thinking about this individual child's needs as you've identified them. And as every teacher and administrator there said, you know, I think we had seven or eight different kind of mock students up there, but I think Holly Rell said she knew every single one of them by name and they attended Chamberlain School. So the couple of things struck me. One is, and it, it sounds simple, but it was a really consistent theme, which is in both our middle school and high school facilities, the absence in a lot of our spaces of natural light is, is a big issue. And I think it addresses some of the issue that Bridget brought up of just kind of healthiness and climate and a little bit of a connection with the outdoors, which, gosh, we're in Vermont. We should be a little connected to our outdoors. I thought that was a little bit of, you know, common theme across all of the design and climate discussions. But the other thing I thought about is, and one, something I think about how we're going to bring the community along as we have, continue to have these conversations. And one area that I think would be a really good baseline for the community is really rebasing how different education is today than in the past and perhaps what many of us and many of us younger than us or a little older than us have grown up with. And, you know, you could argue, it's like, well, it was good enough for me, it's, you know, good enough for my kids and my grandkids and things like that. But there were, there were some really salient points, I thought, that were brought up today around how different it is for children coming into the public education system today, both in terms of what they're bringing into the process, but also between the regulatory environment and between different content areas. I mean, I thought one point that was made is basically, most education historically has been kind of content-based. It was just shovel the facts in and see who could remember the most. And right now, I think the analogy was made that smartphones contain more information than the Library Congress right now. So it's...
The other point to that that really struck me, one of the things that stuck in my brain was that technology education is obsolete within two years after you get it. So if you really focus on the content as opposed to building learners and adaptable citizens, you're going to be obsolete by the time you get out of high school, basically. It's all, the world will have already changed. What you've learned freshman year is no longer applicable by the time you get to be a freshman in college. So that was an interesting point.
And I think there's an opportunity to maybe lay some groundwork before we get into a recommendation stage or even a discussion stage that kind of gives some, and actually, I'm looking ahead at the other paper articles. Maybe that's a good place to start to talk about what has changed and why do we need to think differently about the service we deliver through education? And then the other point, which, you know, I guess it's not new to me, but I agree with, but structure follows strategy. And I know we talk a lot about our facilities and our aging facilities, but in any case, we should know what we want our kids, what competencies we want our kids to be graduating from our public school system with so that we can modify structure accordingly to support those, those ends. Anything else? Thanks, great job.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the feedback and, you know, we'll continue to give you guys updates as we move along in this process. We, we thought it was very successful. We were very happy to see the amount of engagement from everybody. Everybody was very hands-on and thoughtful with their responses and ready to jump in and put their ideas on paper. And especially the students, really excited that we had a good turnout of students. You know, from our perspective, that's the, you know, that's the best voice that we could hear from, is to hear from their perspective. And, and I think, you know, they will help, you know, as long as they continue to be involved, we would welcome that. And we feel that, you know, that will help to drive some of the discussion as we move forward.
The only thing, one of the things we need to, we'll need to figure out is, you know, communicating that today. And, you know, the slides that were used, I think in isolation won't necessarily help the public, but there was a lot of pictures that were taken. There's probably some summary notes that we can, we can come up with to, to kind of provide a synopsis for our community to read about. And obviously, this meeting might, might go along with that as well and some of the feedback that you've, you've provided, so.
Yeah, the, you know, the, I think someone asked, you know, is it possible to share the PowerPoint presentation? And we can certainly do that if you guys would like to. The, the difficulty is there, that goes along with that, is that, you know, there's a lot of context that goes along with each of the slides. You know, there's a fair amount of discussion and narration that goes along with each of the slides. So someone looking at it might be able to decipher, you know, where it was going, but really can't get a full-depth understanding of the day. So I'll leave that up to you guys to decide how you want to approach that.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll talk about it, but again, we don't want to confuse, you know, the public and the reader by looking at a slide that has, like, what's that mean?
Right.
When we had a lot of dialogue behind it. But there are, I think there are some that we could post up there around some of the things that we...
There may be, like you said, we may be able to create some sort of a summary document.
Or it may be better that we just kind of say, this is, we met, we talked, you know, kind of the general summary.
Well, one idea, and I know this adds a layer of work, but is to, as we sort of summarize what some of the conclusions you drew from the information you got from everyone, is to maybe push that back out to the people who were there and the people who said they wanted to stay involved. And just sort of have them sign off on it a little bit and say, yes, that's what I heard. Because that was a challenge we had in the last master planning and visioning process, or at least that I heard from, anecdotally, from community members. You know, I thought we had decided such and such, and that's not at all what came out in the final report, and so I was confused about that. I just want to make sure that the people who did the work and, you know, took a whole day out of their schedule to be there really feel like what's being reported out captures. They're not going to know everything that was captured because they're not going to be able to read everybody's journal, but they can at least sort of give their impressions about, you know, anything that might be added or taken away from that kind of report. And then that report perhaps shared with the community so that it's kind of signed off on a little bit by the people who wanted to still be involved and stay involved on the, on the long-term. Because I do think the more we can bring the community along as we go, as opposed to just dropping something on them in February, is, is, is helpful for everyone and gives people a chance to weigh in by email. I mean, or, or coming to board meetings and that kind of thing. We don't want this to feel like it's a closed-off process. We had to do this and, and do with whatever we could get with people who can take a day off of work and actually be there for us. But we do want input from everyone else, so we need to make sure that they have an avenue to do that.
Yeah, we haven't done, we haven't had a lot of wrap-up time, so this is helpful. I did talk with Jon Stewart at the very end, and we do think similarly, that we want to, number one, thank people who came today. We want to provide a little bit of a summary. We're going to make sure that they're, kind of what I said at the very end, that they stay connected and continue to help spread the word. But we do plan on going back out with them and keep, keeping folks that were there in the loop, including the students.
Great.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
I want to raise one other master planning and visioning question or issue. I mean, since we're looking ahead five, 10, 20, 50 years, if it's like the last high school and such, if we haven't already, I think we should ponder reaching out a little bit more to the islands. I don't know if there was somebody there from the islands today. There may have been. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Jeremy is...
Quasi-administrator and parent.
Right, right, there's that as well. That's true, true. But, but...
Not quasi, administrator.
Yeah, no. I don't think quasi either. I think it's straight up. I think, I don't know where the quasi came from.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I have.
But as far as with the islands, if there's any more of a commitment, I know we've been doing very well in getting students coming here, but I know that they've looked at, and maybe they even accomplished that, Gary can remind me, that they narrowed the number of schools that they actually can send kids to. But I would also, that is not true, it was a discussion that didn't end up happening. But, you know, looking ahead, I would also reach out again to Winuski. And, you know, I don't know that there's other schools, but, but if we're going that far ahead and we have the continuing demographic trends, that's something that we might want to make sure that, we're thinking about that upfront.
I think it's fair, we...
The superintendents along the Champlain Valley are continuing to talk, and we're talking more about working more collaboratively to include student opportunities. We have the big meeting on the sixteenth back at Trader Dukes for superintendents, curriculum directors, and special ed directors to talk about kind of the world-class education and narrowing that focus and looking at opportunities. So we are talking, and we do know that we have activity that brings us up to the Georgia School and the islands to talk about opportunities for them. We're, I, I don't know that we're, there are other schools that do it, but we, we're, that's a very important period of time for us to explain, offer ideas, and suggest programs for students. We do know that we need to do more of that. We need to be connecting more with them around curriculum work, curriculum alignment, and just talking about the general offerings that we have. I think, to Martin's point, we could enter into a conversation to say, you know, is there more that we could do? Are there programs that we can offer that you, that we don't offer, et cetera, so that they're in the know a little bit? Again, attending their board meetings is something we've done in the past. We haven't done it recently, but we've done it in the past.
But, and if we end up having a large bond that has to pay for this, this necessarily means that the tuition that they would be paying would presumably be higher. So I'd like to have them in the loop and have some buy-off that we're heading in a direction that the parents of the hundred and seventy-some kids that we're getting from the islands and Georgia are on board. But also, I do think it makes sense to once again bring up this, this issue with, with Winuski again, as far as, you know, their future and our future, so.
Martin?
I've thought about Winuski as well. I don't know, do you want to go into your details of your thoughts about that?
No, I just think reaching out, if, if there's a need for continuing demographic trends, even though there's an up, it looks like it goes up for a while.
Yeah.
If there's a need for cost savings, for opportunities, that Winuski high schoolers should be coming to South Burlington or to Burlington, it's just, I know that I've, we've raised this over the nine years I've been here, it's, it's come up. And Winuski has not been interested, I don't think, has been at least my impression from the people I've talked to. But nevertheless, it's, at least it's doing our due diligence. I think we should, we should touch base on that.
There are some cost things that have gone on with Winuski.
Again, more on just transportation side.
Yep.
But, you know, nothing long-term cost savings.
Right, but since we're long-term planning, let's talk to our neighbors and how they may or may not fit in.
Thanks.
Another quick update, and this, I just may have forgotten this update, but did we get the results of the differentiated noise study from Chamberlain?
Differentiated, yes.
The differential testing that was done?
That was done by a subcontractor from the FAA.
That's for the noise exposure map, right? It's going into the noise exposure.
That's right.
Oh, I thought we were getting a separate report.
No, so we, we have two, there's two things in play. We did our own.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That data we have.
Mm-hmm.
It's long ago. It feels long ago. And then towards the end of the school year, we did, through the FAA, a contracted firm came and did...
That was the differential study, yeah.
Noise testing, which, you know, measured with sound systems outside. We do, I don't have that.
Did we ever expect a separate reporter or it just was going to be utilized?
From them. I asked about that, but that was data that was going to be rolled up into the FAA.
Oh, that was specific to the grant, not the noise exposure map?
Well, it's all kind of connected to the same, though. I think it's the FAA, it's the grant connected to the noise exposure, because the grant, qualifying conditions for the grant are based on the noise exposure mapping, you know, which they were going to have that solidified for the grant. And that was all going to kind of be compiled for us to be able to, you know, have, I think, passage by the December timeframe.
Well, perhaps, given the delay in the updated noise exposure map, I wonder if it wouldn't make sense just ask if we can access that subcontractor's report, because those results should be available.
You would think, because I think that was August, wasn't it?
It was, I think it was August timeframe, because April was when we did our own. And then I want to say it was right...
Yeah, I think, yeah, it was. There was no students in there, so it was, right, I think you're right.
I think it was like early August.
Right before school started.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right, anything else? We'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, Budget Planning Update.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. See, we would have saved some time if you would just follow. I've rarely been charged with being like more efficient than I'm supposed to be. So budget book redesign, we had the opportunity, some folks weighed in on some thoughts and ideas. We have received that information. We've, I've really done nothing yet to look at and revamp that. What I will tell you is that there's a desire to have kind of more individual building level reports. So in the past years, way back, probably 10 years or more, we had kind of a by-school enrollment, similar to what you, what you see here. And then we had an information from each of our principals, talk about some of the goals and objectives connected to the, what we call our CIP, or Capital Improvement Program, Continuous Improvement Program. God, I got all these capital things going on. And so that's kind of the trend, instead of being so, you know, cumulative around FAQs and some of those. So we do think FAQs are important, but we'll likely park those on our, on our webpage somewhere and shorten that up. Again, make it a little bit more friendly to read, exciting to read, et cetera. So that's a little snippet of that. I don't know if there's questions about the budget book. Hopefully, people still know what that, what that looks like or what it has looked like. Okay. Hearing nothing else, I'll move on.
Can I ask a quick question?
Who gets onto this Citizens Budget Advisory Committee? Can we talk about that for just a moment, please?
Yeah, so we typically, you know, we put out information... Yeah, so we typically, you know, we put out information, actually this year Amity put out, and Gary put out a request, I think it went in the other paper.
Yep.
And we've solicited feedback from folks. We've also gone back to people who've served on it before. So it's the combination of those two is how we run that. And so, we have some dates set, I think currently, Amity? Can you comment on that a little bit about our dates?
We set up three meetings and one November 14th.
Yep.
Six individuals who have reached, or responded to the e-reaching to them.
Yeah.
We've got no response from our ad, unfortunately.
Okay.
I did do the outreach by email to the first episode previously, some said, you know, thank you, others said, please, you know, add this individual email. We know that they've had some interest in the past, so, and even as of today, we've got another.
Right, okay. Sounds like nobody was turned away, is that right?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it was written about in the other paper article, too, correct?
It was, yes, it was in the Amity article, that if people were interested, they should reach out to David and Delina.
If people are hearing this and they want to be part of it.
There's still time, yeah.
We would welcome them. Again, it's three meetings, sometimes they'll stretch it into maybe four, sometimes five, maybe more. But, you know, again, we're a little bit defined by the, by the number of, the time before we have to have it, before the, you, the board, and the community. The other.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Amity, though, are you structuring it the same way as it has been in the past, that you would really like everybody who's going to be involved to commit to be at all three, and that they, if they don't make the first one, then maybe not to join this year and wait until another year? Because it's just, it takes, that first meeting is kind of getting everyone up to speed on what's even in there, and they need that base knowledge to be able to really make good advice in the next two meetings. So, just, people need to jump on it, basically, is what I'm saying. If they're going to be involved, there's not really an opportunity to kind of come in and out of that.
That's right.
And you need to kind of get in there and start the work now.
That's right. I would say that if a board member would like to, you know, come, obviously if there's going to be three of you, that poses the warning, putting us a warning out. But if you'd like to come, you know, I think just sitting and listening is often, we've had that, we've had some of you do that in the past, it's nice.
Yeah, and I would love to be there, but I, that 14th is when we're going to be Master Planning and Visioning, and so I won't be back in time, so if anyone else wants to step up, I would be.
Yeah, it's fine. Doesn't have to be for the whole meeting either, it can be just a hello and how, and thank you for serving, whatever, it's fine. Okay. And the budget calendar, which is in your packet.
You missed a little.
Oh, I did again? Or direction, or the budget. Just trying to leave my glasses on. Trying to lighten it up.
He's tired, he's had a long day.
Trying to see if you guys keep track of me.
That was a slight oversight on that one.
So, before we get to the budget calendar, let's talk about board budget direction. And so, this is, I know we don't have a lot of data before you, but as we're currently in the, the need to begin to pull a lot of information together, directionally around where we, where we want to go with next year, it still feels like we're in the beginning of this year, but that's not, our job is to start to plan for the following year. So I would love to get from you some guardrails, some direction around what you're thinking, because if I go out and plan for something significantly, you know, high or low, I think that would not be doing justice to the, to your work.
Can I throw off one?
Yes, Martin.
So, so for state budget planning, for what this is worth, at this stage of the budget development, the growth rate calculation that they're using is 2.25 percent, and that, that growth rate calculation, it reflects the average rate of growth of wages for Vermonters over the past six years. There's going to be more information on that in December, but that's what, at least at the state level, they're looking at as a, as a growth of the budget, to essentially stay in line with revenue. Of course, we have a different revenue base as far as property taxes and such, but just what that's worth.
Yeah, I think the one barometer that I've had a chance to see recently in a letter to the editor in the other paper, is relative to the school district's growth over the past 14 years in line with inflation, and.
I think inflation's a little higher than 2.25, actually.
It may be, but if you look at a, kind of a rolling trend over a period of time, I'm putting that out as another potential indicator.
It's the tricky bit of, of having to try to estimate until we find numbers in December from the state, or even January from the state, the interaction, trying to estimate what the interaction is going to be between our budget growth and, and the state parameters that then calculate the tax rate.
Right.
So, yeah, ideally the tax rate would grow no more than inflation, or, you know, less than inflation would be ideal, obviously, but it's kind of hard until we start to get some sense from the state of what some of those numbers might be. I'm particularly curious about our equalized pupils, because that changed so much last year, and, and I'm curious to see what it will look like this year, because that will have a big impact on what the tax rate would be coming out of any kind of budget growth that we had. And, yeah, I would, at a very, you know, 60,000-foot level, would like to just be pretty conservative this year, knowing that with the master planning and visioning and some of the other things that we're working on next year might be quite different, and, and to have two years of budget growth in a row, significant budget growth would be, I think, a challenge for the community. But that being said, if there are specific needs, then we need to address them. I mean, that's obviously always the most important thing. But I haven't really heard too much yet about major new initiatives that we see coming down the pike. I could be wrong, but it's a little early to say, but I'm assuming we'll see more expansion of the trauma-informed schools initiatives and those kinds of things. But it seems like we're reasonably, at least versus last year, stable in terms of enrollment growth, so unless there's anything that's really driving a big projected jump for next year, I would assume that we're not probably going to need to add a whole lot of staff or anything like that.
I think also keeping in mind that we're probably going to have to make up for the last two years of using one-time money to buy the tax rate down.
At the state level, yeah.
Another reason why we probably need to be conservative this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, these conversations in the past come so far in advance of the actual detailed budget development. It's a little bit different, different, or difficult to have them, but I think you're starting to get a little feel for, at least what the board's been exposed to. And then I think, consistent with the enrollment piece, and no surprise, David, that I will look at FTEs as well. And I, I would hope that there is some opportunity to drive some efficiencies where that might be possible.
Yeah, I'm also curious to see what we're thinking about the structure of special education, given the changes and how the state is going to fund special education, and what that will do to FTEs, and, and the type of FTEs that we would expect to have in place. Maybe it's too early to, to make those changes wholesale, but I'm curious to see what the thinking is at the high level before we start getting into the numbers of those.
Yeah, we're definitely doing work on, on that area. Again, it's, I'm not wanting to go into, too much into the weeds, I just, I'm happy to be hearing some of the reflections from you on, on what you're thinking.
Steve, anything from a state?
Don't make me say "level-funded."
Well, you've said it now.
You always have to compare a level-funded, in my view, and that's always a.
Well, I mean, just, actually, just to remind ourselves, we typically have looked at a, the impact of a level-funded budget. I don't know if that's direction we want to give at this stage or not.
We've looked at a couple of things. We've looked at a level-funded budget, we've also looked at sort of a run-rate budget. So if we keep the current FTE structure and keep the current programming in place and don't add anything new, where would that end up? So, level-funded, run-rate, and then sort of the, you know, what we would really like to do from a programming perspective. So those are kind of the three that we've looked at, at least the couple of years that I've been on the board.
I think it's important to have that information for the community to understand why we're proposing whatever the budget is we end up with. Good?
If that, yeah, I would, I mean, I guess I would say if that creates additional work, the board would like to hear about that, but I think what it typically has done is it basically forces some prioritization around investment areas. So, these, in order to achieve level funding, these areas would not be funded, or this impact on FTEs.
Yeah, it's true, and that's always a good reminder for the community that level-funded doesn't mean that we keep all the same programming, because there is inflation in wages, which are 80 percent of our, our expenses. And so, level funding really does mean cutting programming somewhere so that we can cut FTEs. So really, the level-funded budget is where we would make cuts if we needed to make cuts, and the, the run-rate one is if we made no cuts, and the, the third one is really, you know, where we would add investments.
Helpful.
If we could.
Great.
All right. Budget calendar.
Budget calendar? Elizabeth's worried I'm going to skip that one. So again, I think, and Amity reported on the Citizens Budget Advisory. Typically, again, you see when we're going to get some information from the state, that often doesn't always happen on time, which puts us further behind on some of the impact issues. But what we've outlined is, you know, what we feel is appropriate and reasonable. Those of you who don't visit this all the time, it's another opportunity just to look at it and see how things back up next to the, you know, when it needs to be approved by the board, and when it needs to get, you know, ready to be submitted for the March period voting. I don't, you know, I don't know if there's, there's questions on here. We've also tried to be mindful of the calendar, the, you know, the, our, you know, our agendas, so that we have some, we've carved out some times in our, in the upcoming bud, upcoming agendas to talk about budget.
Do we put things in the schedule, like when we typically put, take another paper ad out, things like that?
We didn't do that in this, but I know that we've, we've typically kept that, we've had it within our other paper, and I think, you know, we're going to get to that momentarily.
We may just want to add some of these dates and have other activities.
When we've done them?
Yeah. Any other input on the calendar?
The only thing I'd say is that it's, just thinking back to when I was on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, having that meeting, that last meeting the night before we, and also from a board perspective, like, the night before we have to approve a budget to kind of get it warned appropriately, it just feels so rushed, because, or as a Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, sometimes it feels like, well, do they really even take that input, because, you know, it was the night before their big meeting? And so, if we're actually meeting on the 16th to really approve something, we would have needed to see something a couple of days in advance. So I just, it, you know, up to you how you want to structure it, but I, I wonder about the timing of that, whether that meeting needs to be maybe a little earlier than that, like a few days earlier, or something, just to make sure that any last feedback from them is actually incorporated, and, and we can see the results of that.
We can, we can look at it, Bridget. The part, the hard part is, you know, we have been, we've tried to be strategic around, like, the 14th, and then that helps inform the 20, 28th. And again, these are, those are the earlier ones, and then the 10th informs the 19th.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be nice, because there's, you know, we're doing a lot of work with them, and they're not really ready to maybe come, so we'll, we'll look at that and see if maybe we can.
Because, and I know it's hard with people's vacation schedules, but like, if it were January, you know, 8th or something, and informed the January 9th board meeting, that would give us then a full week before we actually had our approval meeting, to sort of incorporate both what we heard on the 9th from Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and our discussion on the 9th, you know, and anything we change after that. But, just a thought.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 10, Executive Limitations Policy Monitoring on 2.5, which is financial planning and budgeting.
So I wasn't at this meeting last time. That's why it went so smoothly, I heard.
I think Delina handed it to us when we were in the office the other day, when we were there for negotiations planning, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I must have a person.
So the majority, I think the, the ends data was outdated and we had not updated it.
Right.
And I will take responsibility for not doing that, so I don't know really what the board would like to do on how to go through this. I will tell you that I still think, and I'm sorry I didn't catch this earlier, but on interpretation, related to the policy, risk before the ends start, I need to, I still need to update that on page eight. I need to still update my interpretation. As you go beyond that, the, the yellow, the yellow highlighted areas reflect the changes.
So you're saying that overall, on page eight, what needs to be changed?
Well, I, I, just, the interpretation should not be referencing as much on the multi-year plan.
Well, the problem is, though, I noticed that that was crossed out when I was, I was going through this. That's actually part of the language of the policy.
Right.
That references the policy, and so we can't really just cross it out, right?
Correct. And that's why I think that, you know, my interpretation, so we, we need to, we need to talk more about that, we can do that tonight, or we can take. So again, I, I don't know, there was a conversation about the multi-year plan, because we haven't been using a multi-year plan.
There was a conversation about that, yeah. I had brought that up, that I felt like it sort of referenced in here that the multi-year plan was the capital, you know, the.
Stewardship plan.
I was like, that's not really what I interpret this to me, I mean, I, I'm thinking of a forecast for a few years out, that's sort of a rough guideline for where we think we ought to be. And, yeah, I didn't, I just sort of said, I, either I've missed it, or we haven't really been using a multi-year plan for that basis, but.
And my recollection in this, when this overall policy was developed, is there was an intent to have a true forecast.
A true multi-year plan for, that took into account enrollment projections and all that kind of.
So, I mean, I think that if that's, if we're going to make the strikeout, then we have to bring it back and talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that we should do that. I think we should have a multi-year.
Well, we're not, this is the monitoring, so we really have to have a separate.
We would have to go through the three, we would have to go through the three readings if we really want to take that out, yeah.
Only if you change the policy, not the interpretation. If it's just the interpretation being changed, that doesn't have to go.
But I was.
Right, but I'm saying the overall policy right now has crossed out on page eight, sort of a, yeah.
Yeah, got you. So that's, yeah, so I would recommend that we not have that as a proposed next step. Keep the, the multi-year plan in, let my interpretation reflect it.
Yeah.
And have, have a plan or a multi-year plan that, that talks specifically tied into enrollment, albeit it's going to have to be fairly vague, unfortunately, because of the financial forecasting currently in place in the state. But I would recommend that we keep it. And then my interpretation, again, if, if that's a strikeout, then I would have, I have work to do. If it stays, then I can pull some of that back in.
So you can modify the interpretation, though, without?
Yeah.
So that will be one.
I just, I was confused by the cross-out. I wasn't here, you know, at the last meeting when that happened, so.
Well, I think, I think I probably crossed it out, because not sort of knowing how the policy, hold, you know, having to change a policy would work, whatever, but we had said that we weren't really doing that. We were really starting from this conversation that we just had, as well as the priorities of the administration and the faculty, and that was really the basis for each year's plan, as opposed to this, this massive multi-year plan.
So does it make sense at this point to go through the detailed policies and, and look at the highlighted areas?
I think, did we get through that last time?
Well, I didn't know if these were new highlighted.
The highlighted yellows are new.
Yeah, there's a lot of new.
There was a, there was, they were, they were outdated, and this reflects our.
New from last meeting.
That's correct.
Yes.
And involves feedback from myself and Mike Martin.
Well, seeing as I didn't know I had this, and even though Delina did give it to me, if we could, if you're suggesting, because you want to make some changes.
I think so. Define it, whatever you want to do, Elizabeth.
Push it to the next meeting.
Well, what's the board's pleasure? Do we want to review the changes in the detailed policies, or should we hold it till David reinterprets the superintendent section?
You'll also have Mike Martin here, I think, on the 28th, too.
Will you be here on the 28th, Martin?
Yep.
I, I would prefer to wait, frankly. I, I would prefer to wait, frankly. I, I have skimmed it, you know, so I've caught a couple of those little things, but I have not gone through it in the detail that I normally would, frankly.
I would say if you do have some feedback that you'd like, you know, to give us before, that would help.
Yeah.
Make our conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will table this till the twenty-eighth.
Amity, anything you wanted to add? I didn't know if you had.
A lot of the yellow highlights tend to end, to talk to the ends piece at the end, but I did on page three add, per Martin's request at the last meeting about, so I just wanted to, you don't have to talk about it today, but I just wanted you to know, I did put a little section in there with regard to the support staff retirement. I think beyond that, just a few wording situations changed throughout from me on my perspective, and the rest, I think, was David's adjustments to the ends. So, we'll talk about it next time.
Great, thanks.
This thing is loud, like a, like a wingboard.
Oh, the tape, huh?
Richard's got it, vroomed up.
All right, we'll move on to executive, or, yeah, Agenda Item 11, Other Paper Articles. And we do have a calendar in our packet. So, the next one is on master planning and visioning. Bridget, you're signed up, and this would run in the December sixth.
I think it makes sense, because we will have, we will have gone through this visioning session we just went through, and we will have been back from Massachusetts, and there will have been a lot of work between the last article and this one on master planning and visioning. So, yep, I'm happy to.
Lot of pressure. Lot of reporting.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that.
Should we, I'm just thinking about this out loud because of the content on this, should we think about potentially purchasing additional space for a longer article in this particular one?
I think along those lines, that we should instead have an insert, like a two-pager that would go along with the other paper, you know, when that got sent out, rather than having it embedded within the paper itself. The reason I say that is I ran across, it was a little slightly different context, but for CCV, is that CCV? Am I getting my acronyms right? Thank you, that's all I meant. Oh, yeah, they had this nice two-page, it looked like it was an insert in whatever their paper is, about the budgeting coming up, and giving dates, and the current status of the budget, and all these kind of really interesting things, which, if I hadn't forgotten, I would've brought it and suggested we maybe have done something like that. But, but it just seemed effective that it was just this, you know, separate.
I like that suggestion, because I've talked to a few people who I spend a lot of time with, actually, who say, yeah, I don't even read the other paper, like I don't get through it, you know. But an insert is easy to sort of pull out when you get the other paper, or look at before you recycle the whole thing. Not that, I think the other paper's wonderful. I'm not, I'm not at all considering the other paper. I'm just saying, a lot of people don't bother to open it up and actually read it. And so, I think an insert gets people's attention.
Especially if it's all blue, the paper.
So, the idea would be to do something after the master planning and visioning?
I don't know about the timing of it.
I don't, I'm not sure the timing is right for something that, 'cause that, to me, sort of says, that's about the time that we have some options and things that we're talking about.
Yeah, I'd say that's.
Yeah, so that's more like a January or February.
Right, so I, and I would be worried on the lead-up to a kind of budget conversations, that it doesn't confuse our audience around, okay, you know.
There's no one's gonna hear it.
Yeah, 'cause it's not this year.
Yeah, 'cause I was, yeah, I was gonna actually suggest that we do another master planning and visioning article on the twenty-eighth, you know, the one that, in March, but this might be better to do a one-page on March.
That's right, right.
Yeah.
Kind of on where we are.
Unless somebody has another idea for the article, I still think it could be good just to have a short article on, you know, where we are right now.
Yep.
And then another one again in the spring, if we're just trying to keep it in front of people.
Yeah, I think there's some close proximity to people who were just involved in this meeting, you know, so I think, and Channel Three, which I told you they were there today. So, I think it would be appropriate and fitting to do that, but I would worry about doing too much after that, as it connects to budget. I would worry that people are gonna start to get confused.
Yeah, one thing, I wanted this one for this next month, but, and, you know, and March, you know, so, so keep it in front of people as much as possible.
So, we're still, we've still got four ahead. So, unless anybody has something thinking about running in the four-four issue?
I was thinking master planning, but I think the one, but I think the one pager might work better at that stage.
So, Delina, would you mind making a note on this handout that we get as an update, just to put a master planning and visioning insert, maybe with an asterisk at the bottom, or, yeah, what's that? Really, maybe at the bottom?
In April sometime, probably.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I think it would be an addition to a potential article, but just so we have a notation of.
Right, instead of a regular article embedded in the paper, it would be the insert.
Right.
Maybe March, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, seeing no additional topics on that one, we'll move to legislative priorities. There is a meeting on the twenty-sixth of legislators, correct?
Yeah, I suppose, maybe. It'd be in my calendar. I don't think that necessarily needs to be a, yeah, there is. If anybody wants to attend, six o'clock to eight o'clock at the library on the twenty-sixth. So, would the thought be to get something to the legislators? Now, I don't think so, 'cause I think we send it more broadly to all the Chittenden County senators sworn at that meeting.
Yeah, no, I was just, I didn't know if there was some overlap in that particular meeting.
No, I don't think necessarily. So, so I dragged out our letter from, actually, we sent them a letter, and thanks to Bridget for taking the lead on this, last December. I thought it had been two years, but it was actually last December that we sent the letter. And I could run through real quickly what we said the priorities were then, and I know that we're gonna add something for raising the age for, for smoking, or for vaping, et cetera. But it's, we did have something about statewide teacher, healthcare. I don't think we need to do anything on that at this point. We had something on collective bargaining. I think we have to see how this all plays out before we go back down that road. Mandated level funding of school bud, district budgets, we can weigh in. Again, I haven't heard that there's that, that that's gonna happen. Staffing ratios, there is supposedly a.
Study group, yeah.
A study group, as, I think as of August, or no, as of the September Vermont School Board Association meeting, nobody had really been assigned to that committee yet. So, I don't know what's gonna happen with that. Act forty-six is pretty close to done. I don't know that we need to weigh in on that.
Well, the one thing that didn't come up in a VSB resolution was really monitoring the cost savings associated with Act forty-six mergers, 'cause that was one of the intents of the act. And yet, there doesn't seem to be a mechanism to monitor where there have been realized savings.
Right, right, okay. I'll write that down as one thing to throw in. I'm happy to take first shot at this draft and send it down. We had, we did have something in here about school choice, encouraging the state to put measures in place to ensure that public tax dollars are used to provide public education, and to keep as much funding in Vermont as possible. I think we could put that in there again. Cost of social services provided through schools, I think that's consistent with one of the VSBAs. Unfunded mandates, that's pretty consistent. I think we would wanna say that again. Timing of guidance and mandates, pretty key. I think that, that we should ask for again.
Poor Amity over there, yes.
And, let's see, state additional support for school districts, state or regional analytical support, investment in the development of state or regional level analytical capabilities to support districts in their budgeting and negotiating processes. I don't know if we really need to throw that one out at this point, or.
I would put.
You want that in? Okay. Capital improvement support, of course. Yes. I've already asked for that bill to be redrafted, so. So, in addition to the raising the age, is there other ideas?
How about anything on safety and security? I mean, there were the grants this year. Should that be an ongoing?
Safety and security follow-up, essentially. Did you wanna weigh in on guns?
Well, I think that one ties, not, not the guns, the, the safety and security ties into facilities.
Capital improvement, yeah.
'Cause, you know, from my perspective, important, and it was a nice gesture, but it's kinda like, do a little bit of this when we've got a lot of this. And right now, facilities, I mean, safety's important, but when we look at the functionality of facilities, it's, 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 it's big. And so, it's just we're doing these little kind of one-off things. And so, maybe under facilities could be the safety, or, or part of that could be safety and security, or standalone, whichever you want. But both are really tied.
Yep, yeah, no, that's good.
Martin, what's the location?
Uh, it is the library conference room.
Town library?
Yep.
And how long does this usually last? But I have a conflict that goes from six to six-thirty.
It's six to eight.
Six to eight, they're usually there?
I think it's a little bit before eight, because they close at eight, and we, we wanna let them close.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to make it.
Given the content at the VSB conference this year about diversity and inclusion, would we wanna include anything?
So, the, yeah, that would be another possibility. There was a bill that was going through that the VSB, Nicole Mace helped out on, that was instructing the Agency of Education to work on curriculum dealing with more diversity. I don't, I don't recall the details, but it kinda got hung up at the end of the session. It is something that's getting reintroduced, and, and I can find a little bit more detail about that, incorporate our endorsement of it, at least for draft, and then we can decide what to do. So, there is an effort to, to tell a broader story in certain, within the curriculum, I guess is a way to sum that up.
That might be helpful to see what language is already out there on that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then how about on the statewide healthcare, the guidance around comparables? Should we reinforce what was discussed in Act eleven?
Yeah, it's already there. We can, we can ask them to strike the part about looking at other schools, at the schools. I don't know. I mean, there may be something there. Yeah.
Okay.
I can take a look at that.
Well, that sounds pretty comprehensive.
And I'm sure, I'm sure the legislature will get all of it done, if we just ask them. They're very responsive.
All right, move on to setting the agenda for the November twenty-eighth meeting. It sounds like we are bringing 2.5 back, if it's not on here. I think it is on here.
So, Bridget, if you could send me that file, if you still have that file, 'cause I'm not sure that I, 'cause I'll just start off yours. Would it be all right if I had about ten minutes to present what I learned at the vaping talk? I promise it will be pertinent.
Yeah, I think my, and we had this conversation at the last meeting, that this, from a, from a policy governance standpoint, I still feel like this is an area that we should be looking to our administration to kind of come to the board with a recommendation. And if that recommendation includes the need to identify kind of expert testimony, that it should still come through the administration. But I, I mean, that's my initial reaction, but I'll open it up for other comments.
I thought we were going to do that by scheduling the youth risk behavior survey.
That's what we had talked about, yeah.
And, and understand what is going on in the school, and we can ask questions to understand if, you know, what's going on for enforcement, or for dealing with substance abuse broadly, and, and more narrowly, nicotine abuse. I mean, I think it's at, it's in that context that, that we should be doing that. I mean, I don't think it's, it's our role to essentially be telling them what to do without us even having heard what the current situation is and what is being done. You know, your background in having looked at that, and, and having gone to learn more information, that certainly could inform the questions and what we're asking of the administration. I think that's the more appropriate format where something will, can actually get done from it.
Did we get a date on when the youth risk behavior survey results will be out?
It's out already, I think.
I think it is, too, 'cause anybody.
It's just come out. I, I don't exactly, I haven't read it, so.
I mean, I, I think, you know.
If you wanted to set up, I mean, maybe Alex can meet with us, administration, on the youth bit.
Well, we did talk about adding this to a future agenda item, so the service basis.
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate, too. And I think what Alex's concerns are is very appropriate to, to understand and hear from the administration. But I think it should be in the context of hearing on this particular issue, and I think it goes right into some of the policies that we have. But I don't think we necessarily need to wait.
Well, we often cite the youth risk behavior survey in the monitoring report.
Right, I'm trying to remember which monitoring report.
Yeah, it's two, well, Treatment of Student, right?
Yeah, I think it's Treatment of Students.
Two-twenty, whatever, two-point-one.
We, we have had this as an agenda item in the past. Is it something that, timing-wise, can, we can make a specific agenda item if the board, if it's the board's desire?
Yeah, instead of waiting to see a report in the monitoring.
Yeah.
Well, what is two-point-one scheduled for?
I don't have my calendar with me.
Look who's, look who's prepared for a change. Look who's prepared for a change. Yeah, I think that's waiting too long. If we want to fold it into it, it's not until April. And I know definitely Alex wants to have this out before perhaps the legislative session gets started as well.
Yeah, I think December, January would be a good timeline. I mean, I mean, January, it's started, but it's not ended, and.
Yeah, they're just getting off the ground at that.
I would say, maybe we can, I'm happy to set up a meeting with Alex. We look at the youth risk behavior survey and look at it, and he can share the context of what he's thinking, and that can come back as under a, either superintendent report, you know.
Well, yeah, and I definitely, again, I think that we should, we should see, well, we should definitely see the, you know, have a report on what the youth risk.
So, we'll put youth risk behavior survey.
Okay, and we can put.
And then that's a place where, you know, Alex can weigh in on.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, yeah, my only, I'm working at this time.
We're kinda taking, yeah, we're taking that kind of policy governance and plunking it in there, but given that it's been on the agenda, that's the way I would recommend we do it. We just put it as an agenda, the youth risk behavior survey.
Okay, for the twenty-eighth?
Which, well, I would say, Alex, I don't know, I mean, it's gonna be contingent upon us talking. I think we could tentatively schedule it for the twenty-eighth, but it would be contingent upon us meeting and talking about it, and being able to have.
Yeah, that sounds good.
An informed conversation with the board.
All right. Any other comments on the November twenty-eighth agenda?
One question is, I thought we were, we had added on negotiation status, just a very quick line item of like whether we'd had any meetings or not had any meetings, or, you know, that kind of thing. And I didn't know if that needed to be added on, or if we wanted to.
Well, we've had them on the previous ones. We didn't put it on this one.
Okay, okay, no worries, okay.
And it didn't, yeah, it wasn't on this agenda.
It wasn't on this agenda. That's why I was kinda surprised, 'cause we have had our first meeting, and, yeah.
My fault.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. I just wanted to make sure.
So, we'll, we'll keep it on there, just as a, as a reoccurring update.
Yep.
Okay. The only thing I'd say, David, is maybe just to revisit the content on the twenty-eighth and see if we have adequate time for all these discussions, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Move on to fut, future agenda items. Well, if we schedule the youth risk survey, we can take that off. Well, if we schedule the youth risk survey, we can take that off.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Okay, seeing no changes or comments, move on to Agenda Item 15. We have a number of meeting minutes to consider, the, I'll just put them all as a package and we'll start with the, let's see, five meetings in October, the 15th, 17th, 22nd, 24th, and 29th. And I believe at least three of those were working session meetings with a subcommittee of the board. Any changes? All right, seeing none, those are approved, and then the last meeting of November 1st. And seeing none, those are approved as well. So Agenda Item 16, we have AP orders 15 and 16. Any questions or comments? All right.
I was 15 minutes early.
I was trying earlier.
Yeah, you were, you were trying to make-
All right, all in favor, all in favor.
Aye.